Good evening. I now call the February 6, 2019 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Yeah.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. All members of the board are present and accounted for. Before we move on, I'd just like to apologize for starting the meeting a little later than usual. We were in closed session and it went a little longer than we had anticipated. Now moving on to the invocation, I'd like to call on our student representative, Mr. Jeremy Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight Nolan Cargill, a fifth grade student at Tyler Elementary School will be giving us the opening.
I pledge of allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I read my poem?
Yes, we dropped it.
Okay. Pain is very dark. It hurts and you don't want it to happen. But it happens anyway. Everyone experiences pain, but you've got to bear through it. Don't let pain get you down because it will make you a very bad person. I know this because I have experienced it sometimes and I just bear through it. But sometimes you've just got to rise from an ignorance and be happy and grateful that you have emotions because it's great to be happy and more and more people will like you.
So I'm curious, what made you choose that poem?
Because, you know, sometimes I just experience it sometimes and I feel like I just need to write about it and let my emotions go out.
Wow, you wrote that?
That's great.
Wow. Well, that's truly wonderful. So how does it feel being a fifth grader?
Amazing.
Yeah, because you're on top and you're the example. That's good. What's your favorite subject?
Art.
Art? Why art?
Because it like makes me relaxed and I just come with, I just draw what's in my mind.
So are you an artist or a writer or both? What do you think?
I think kind of a writer, but most likely an artist.
That's good. So do you want to pursue art as a career?
I want to be a biologist, but I want to draw like wildlife. So basically, I'm going to be a biologist and artist.
Wow. Wow. So can you tell us who you've brought with you tonight?
I brought my mom, my dad. I brought Ms. Onide, Dr. Johnson, and yeah, that's pretty much.
Can all of you please stand?
Could you all please stand?
Well, we really enjoyed your poem, Nolan, and it was nice meeting you and I hope you enjoy the remainder of your school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Nolan. The next item for business is item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Ms. Madam Chairman.
Second.
Woman.
Second.
It's already been second, okay, baby. Oh, I tell you. It has been properly moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Mr. Kilgore with another seconded by Dr. Richard Mason that we adopt tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we move to the recognitions portion of our program. I'd like to call on our Executive Director for Marketing, Ms. Kelly Gore, who will be assisted tonight with, by Ms. Phyllis Henry.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of the School Board, Superintendent Smith, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. It is our pleasure to begin this evening's recognition with a recent award that our Science Department received. The Virginia Mathematics and Science Coalition selected the Hampton City Schools Hampton Environmental Literacy Program, otherwise known as HELP, as a Programs That Work recipient for 2019. HELP is organized and administered by Venecia Farrell, our Science Curriculum Leader, and our Science Department of Hampton City Schools. So at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Farrell and Shannon Pullman to please join us up on stage. We can give them a round of applause when they're coming up. Pretty significant fan. You ladies would like to stand by? Ms. Henry? We want to brag on you for a few more moments before we give you the mic. Okay. So HELP is an environmental education program tasked with reaching Hampton City Schools students in grades four through eight, biology, oceanography, ecology, and environmental science, with high-quality and impactful watershed experiences embedded into the science curricula. The program was developed to build teacher capacity and the development and implementation of engaging and relevant field investigations and meaningful watershed education experience with students. And I can truly vouch for that because I've had the opportunity to be there when we've had teachers out on canoes and students putting those oysters back into the river. It's pretty amazing. So the ultimate goal of HELP has been to ensure that each HCS student has experienced at least three meaningful watershed education experiences or field investigations prior to graduation, one each at elementary, middle, and high school, so that they graduate ready to assume leadership in environmental planning and decision-making within our communities. Hampton City Schools partnered with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, James River Association, and other local entities to provide quality training experiences for our teachers, field experiences, and opportunities to engage in service learning and citizen science projects for students. So throughout the four-year program period, the project has surpassed its goals and has been recognized by Mark Warner and the Hampton Clean City Commission as an exemplary environmental education program. So at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Farrell to give us a quick overview of some of the things that have been accomplished in the last four years.
Good evening. Some of the things that we've done in the last four years, starting with fourth grade and moving all the way up to high school, you have teachers that are comfortable now going out and doing field investigations with their students. They spend a week out with us and they learn about the watershed, everything that, how it impacts their curriculum. It also, they are very comfortable with taking their kids either on a canoe or boat, depending on the age of their student. And they decided, actually the teachers, they wanted to get into oyster restoration. So we now have two oyster reefs, one that we supply at the Elizabeth Lakewin site and one that the students of Booker Elementary actually designed with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation at Langley Air Force Base. And so the students raise their oysters all year long as they go on their trips and experiences and then they go and plant them. So it's a full program throughout that entire year, so, just to give you some idea. And the whole idea is to kind of build back up our watershed.
Excellent.
These young ladies, I have to be extra proud of because I had the privilege of watching them both in their first-year teaching. And they were dynamite then, but the neat thing is, is they've done so much with this program to help every elementary teacher who maybe wasn't a science nut like they were feel comfortable going out into nature and working with their students on that wonderful thing called scientific investigation, which isn't a worksheet. It's looking at real stuff in the real world. And I think you've been hanging around with Dr. Cagiano too long, and I think HELP is a nice acronym, but you know, I hate acronyms, so I have to say again, the name of this program is the Hampton Environmental Literacy Program. And it's both been a wonderful experience for kids and for teachers. And so on behalf of our Chairman, Ms. Cherry, our Vice Chair, Mr. Kilgore, the Superintendent, and all the board members, we congratulate you for winning the Programs That Work recognition that you have from the Virginia Math and Science Coalition and for all you do for -- and we want to, the other member of this crew, Betsy McAllister, is still working with us as a partner from NASA and, NASA? And science investigation from that angle. But they, these are folks who love to go out and get wet and dirty and play in the mud with worms and, and it makes science fun. And we really appreciate all that you've done to make this program, to win the money to make this program possible and recognition from NOAA and everybody else before, but for this as well. Thank you so much.
And one of the pieces that we wanted to point out is this is the actual award that they won.
Okay, you get to hold this one.
So they were presented this award back on January 15th at the State Library of Virginia in Richmond where they were recognized for this great work.
And they're also going to be presenting at the National Science Teachers Association in St. Louis in April. And we appreciate them and all the wonderful science teachers who are doing this work. Thank you all so much.
Moving on to our second set of recognitions, it is our pleasure to continue them this evening with our National Board Certified Teachers. Through National Board Certification, teachers demonstrate that their teaching meets the professionals' standards for accomplished practice through a rigorous, peer-reviewed, and performance-based process, similar to professional certification in fields such as medicine. In achieving Board Certification, teachers prove their ability to advance student learning and achievement.
National Board Certification is respected throughout the country. It's a very high standard. It's not just a checkmark, I've taken this many courses, I have passed this many little things. It is a process of reflection, demonstrating teacher work, videotapes of your class, lots of performance requirements. And these teachers have really gone the extra mile, not just because they want the recognition, but because they want to be the best teachers they can be, and they prove that every day for us. So they've been developing and they share as well their skills as outstanding educators.
So this year, we are very proud to be able to recognize four Hampton City Schools teachers that have earned their National Board Certification for the very first time. So when we call your name, if you would please join us up on stage. Our first teacher is Ms. Stacy Maida, who is a Health and Physical Education Teacher at Kickitane High School. If you would please join us. Our next teacher is Ms. Charlene Rawls, a Reading Interventionalist at Machen Elementary We have Heather Roberts, a Reading Specialist from Aberdeen Elementary School. And we also have Jessica Townsend, who is a Title I Interventionist at Forest Elementary So these four ladies are newly National Board Certified Teachers. Let's give them another round of applause. And we're going to go ahead and squeeze a few more teachers up here to give some recognition because in addition to these four, we also have, are proud to recognize, seven additional staff members who earned their renewal certification for National Board Certification. I do want to recognize two teachers, I don't believe they're able to be here with us tonight, but I certainly would like to call their names out. Ms. Shirley Eileen Adams, who is a Special Education Inclusion Teacher at Phillips Elementary School. She was not able to join us this evening, nor was Ms. Nicole Byernode, who is a music teacher at Cooper Elementary School. But let's give them a round of applause. And then with us tonight, I believe, we have Mary Beth Crawford, who is a Gifted Resource Teacher at Armstrong School for the Arts. We also have Melissa Duckworth, a dual enrollment English teacher from Kickitane High School. We have Gabrielle Palma, who is a Reading Interventionist at Bryan Elementary School. We also have Christine Rogers-Rader, a school counselor from Booker Elementary School. And last but not least, Ms. Lily Smith, a Reading Specialist and Literacy Leader from Andrews Pre-K through 8th School.
I kept looking around for these certificates and now we get to juggle them all at once, so that'll be fun.
I can hand them to you one at a time if you'd like.
Okay, that would be much easier.
Perfect.
Okay. These all say, "Congratulations on behalf of our Chairman and the Superintendent and all the board, and we are terrifically proud of you." Stacy Maida?
Okay.
Charlene Rawls? Now, you all sit down a little bit because we don't have a better photo op for all the audience here.
Okay.
Look that way for your public, this is important. Jessica Townsend?
Ms. Ann McCallum.
Beth Nick Crawford.
Melissa.
Gabrielle Palma.
Christine Rogers-Rader.
And last and not least, my name was always at the end of the talk, but it's Lily Smith.
Congratulations to all of you, and I know there are lots of supporters out here, I probably ought to go buy them a mug for you, not with my top sergeant for us. Spent enough years in the classroom, you can project, right? On behalf of all the board, we want to thank you for all that you do for Hampton City Schools in this wonderful accomplishment and the extra time and effort you took to do it, and the smiles for your public out here. And then we're going to ask them also, to all your supporters, to smile and stand up so you can recognize them as well. Congratulations so much. And all the families stand up too.
And one person I would like just to kind of give a special thank you to is Ms. Kim Richardson. I believe she made it, I know she was a little under the weather. Could you say it again? Ms. Richardson is Hampton City Schools Teacher Development Coordinator, and she really oversees the National Board Certified Teacher Certification Program and really assists and is quite the cheerleader and advocate for us. So thank you very much for all you do.
And I think we're still running the race with much, much larger districts on having the larger, a large, large number of nationally Board Certified Teachers. And they're just really that good. Thank you all.
All right, but this, we still have one more recognition, but I'm going to ask Ms. Henry to please take a seat. And thank you so much for assisting me with the first two, but as we move on to the last one. All right. So the month of February marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of School Board Members and celebrate public education. The Virginia School Boards Association theme for this year's celebration is advancing opportunities for all, which reflects the top priority of local School Board Members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. So local School Boards keep the public in charge of public schools since they represent the community's beliefs and values. And in Hampton City Schools, our School Board Members must develop policies and make some tough decisions sometimes on complex educational and social issues impacting the entire community. So in essence, they are kind of like our HCS School Board superheroes as they advance opportunities for every child, every day, whatever it takes. So as we kick off our recognition, I'd like everybody to take a look at the screen, sit back, and enjoy our trailer. Members, if you all could come around and kind of stand in front of your spots at the table, please. Don't you worry, Ms. Henry, he'll have the opportunity. All right, is everybody around front with me? So at this time, I'd like to ask that, or invite some special guests from Cary Elementary School as well as Phoebus High School to join us on stage to assist in honoring each of you as our School Board superheroes. Okay, so we have with us this evening, Ms. Miriam Nicole Crocker, Zaden Farthing, Canaan Goins, who are Cary kindergarten superheroes, as well as Alana Heinerman, Kyle Heller, Madison Williams, and Fernando Quilis Gonzalez, who are Cary third-grade superheroes. Let's see your superhero poses. So one at a time, they are going to, I'm going to call on them to help me out with a little part of tonight's presentation. All right, so first up is Ms. Alana. Would you come join me up at the microphone, please? All right, Alana has something to say.
Mr. Super Samuels, thank you for always doing your best.
All right, Alana, Alana. Bring that to Mr. Samuels, we've got one other thing.
Where is he?
Mr. Samuels, would you step forward, please? There you go, sir. Happy School Board Appreciation Month. All right, next we have Canaan. Canaan, why don't you come on up, buddy? All right, let's face this way.
I can't be member with this again.
Heroic Henry.
No, I have this.
Don't worry about that. Nice and loud. I'll say it with you. Ready? All right, let's do it together. Say, "Miss Heroic Henry, thank you for always being kind and helpful." Come on up, buddy. He is our serious superhero tonight. All right, we're ready? Let's see what we got. Let me read it with you.
Mr. Knockout Kilgore, thank you for always following directions.
Miriam, you want to join me up here? Awesome, good job.
Ms. Captain Cherry, thank you for always being a team player.
All right, next up is Kyle. Would you like the mic? You want me to hold it? You got it? All right.
Ms. Magnificent Mugler, thank you for always being responsible.
All right, next we have Madison. Come on up, Madison.
Mr. Wonder Woodhouse, thank you for always saying please and thank you.
These are very important superhero traits. And last up is Zaden. Ready?
Yep. Mr. Mighty Mason, thank you, thank you for always raising your hand to speak.
And if I could have our superheroes line up with our superhero School Board Members so we could get a big picture, that would be great. All right, I know there's a lot of pictures that want to be had right now, so, everybody smile. All right, everybody say superhero.
Superhero.
characters. They also got a bag, that is an HCS superheroes bag, that instead of Gotham City, it is Hampton City with our School Board logo at the top. And they also got an appreciation candy bar for a Big Crunch and a certificate of appreciation. So, thank you guys, you did awesome. Now guess what? You get to have a donut. Go ahead. Good job. All right. Good job. All right. Good job. All right. Good job. All right. Next up is Kyle. Would you like the mic? You want me to hold it? You got it? So, I wanted to say one last thank you to our Cary superheroes, our Phoebus Phantom for coming out tonight, but as well as a thank you to Dr. Brzezinski, Ms. Dickerson, and Ms. Gatling, who assisted with this. And a big shout out to Sharnita Carmona and Graphics as she created these heroes. And Matt Buttwalter and Peg, who did a fantastic job on the trailer tonight. So, thank you, and as being superheroes, you are hardworking, energetic, responsible, organized, enthusiastic, and sincere. And Madam Chair, that is the conclusion of our recognitions this evening.
Well, thank you so much. And let's have another round of applause for all those wonderful students, our superheroes, as well as the graphics department for helping us. We really do appreciate that. I first want to say, on behalf of the board, that while this is School Board Appreciation Month, we enjoy the fact that we get the privilege to serve you. We are, that's what we're about, serving this school division, serving our children, serving our families, and serving our schools. So, we take that job seriously. So, we want to thank you for entrusting us with such an important task. Thank you. Oh, that's for Jeremy, yes. A couple of things before we move on to the posted agenda. Like to acknowledge, as we talk about service and being committed to doing what is best for this entire community, we'd like to acknowledge that we have with us today our Mayor, Mr. Donnie Tuck. Mr. Tuck, will you please stand? And thank you so much for your support of the Hampton School Division. This is also School Board Clerk Appreciation Month. And we all recognize, we couldn't do any of this without our clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers. Ms. Bowers, they've taken the mic, but you come stand on the stage. We've got a little something for you, okay?
I'm gonna do it this way. We're superheroes because we make it happen, right? Ms. Bowers just said she likes to be behind the scenes. She has been behind the scenes for 20-plus years. Not only a school board clerk, which a lot of school divisions have someone who's just a clerk, she is also the Public Relations Specialist in the Public Relations Department. She holds dual roles. So, let's have a round of applause just for that, I tell you. Now, this certificate is from the VSBA, and it says, "VSBA School Board Clerk/Deputy Clerk Certificate of Appreciation to Carolyn Bowers in appreciation of your dedication and hard work for public education through continued service to the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. School Board Clerk/Deputy Clerk Appreciation Week, February 18th through 22nd, 2019." And then it's signed by R. Tyrone Fawcett, the President of VSBA, as well as Gina Patterson, the Executive Director. Much appreciated. But, you know, we like to do our own thing. So, we asked our people in Graphics to come up with our own certificate, just for you, Ms. Bowers, for your dedication and support as clerk of the Hampton School Board, presented this 6th day of February 2019, and it is signed by every member of the board. And one last little piece. We were going to give you flowers, but we know you're not a flower person. We know you always talk about, "They die, then I have nothing." So, we decided, as a board, to give you what you want. And Ms. Gole made sure she let us know what you like. So, here are a couple of really, really nice gift certificates in here because as a school board, we believe in giving you what you want. So, thank you again for all of your years of service and being so good to us. Okay, just shows, we've got a lot to celebrate in Hampton City Schools, whether it's our National Board Certified Teachers, or our Science Department doing wonderful things, or the fact that we've just got some great people all around. As we move forward to the next item of business, it is the Consent Agenda, which consists of 3.01 minutes of School Board Meeting of January 16th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Samuels to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Herein now, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item of business is Superintendent and Staff Reports, and I'll turn the meeting now over to Dr. Jeffrey Smith, our Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. It is my pleasure to ask at this time. I think that Mr. Darrell Rogers and members of his team will be coming forward, and I'm not sure. I think, yes, he's going to come up and share with us the great things that are going on as it relates to our out-of-school time. And so, Mr. Rogers and members of your team, please, at this time, this is an opportunity to share with the board, but not only the board, members of the viewing audience as well.
Good evening, Chairwoman Cherry. Vice Chair, Mr. Kilgore, Dr. Smith, and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to present about our out-of-school time programs. I am Darrell Rogers, and I will be joined today in my presentation with Latasha Brown Davis and Ms. Jeanette McKenney. So, we're going to look at three different areas today. We're going to look at program reviews and outcomes for our 2017-18 school year, what's new and going on current for this school year, and then our future summer programs for this year. Looking at outcomes, so, in out-of-school time programs, we had over 3,000 students that participated in our out-of-school time programs. And I want to highlight that those students that participated came to school 95% of the school days. Our first program we want to look at is Math Blitz. In Math Blitz, of course, there's a high focus on math, remediation, and strengthening of skills. And we were at five sites in 2017-18, which were Asbury, Burbank, Cooper, Crafton, Smith. And the students that participated in Math Blitz saw an average of 2.5 points increase on their math SOL from 2018 to 2017. And Leslie Strachan-Williams, the curriculum leader for math, wrote the synopsis, I won't read it all, I'll just read the first part to you, but she says, "Schools participating in Math Blitz Extended Day Program continue to make great strides in student achievement noted in SOL test results." So, we just want to say thank you to the math department for partnering with us doing these Math Blitz programs. Going into 21st Century Elementary Programs, last year, we had seven schools, as you see up top. And looking at their improvement in their scores, their 2018 SOL scores compared to the 2017 SOL scores, we saw a growth of those 21st Century students of 14 points in Language Arts and 5-point increase in math. We also focused heavy on our science and STEM components during 21st Century time, and the students that participated also scored an average of 4.5 on their science SOL. So, we had a unique opportunity for 21st Century students that all of our 21st Century students that participated became published authors. So, we had over 1,000 published authors through 21st Century. And then Right Brain and Jeff Kenny, who is the author of A Dire Wimpy Kid, came up with a national contest, and so our students entered the contest for writing. And our students were selected as the winner for the book contest. And Jeff Kenny actually read each response himself. So, we just want to highlight, they wrote the book called The Monster Field Trip, and those students were from Cary. And they were Jacob Blackerby, Chloe Goins, and Logan Smith. So, we wanted to highlight that as a 21st Century accomplishment as well. Moving on to 21st Century Middle School Programs, we had four sites for middle school programs, and we also saw some increases in SOL scores. From the 2018 to 2017 school year, we saw an increase in Language Arts as well as math from the students that participated in 21st Century. Talking about expansion and growth, we were looking at 21st Century program over the years. And if you notice, from 2013, we started with one 21st Century grant, a little over $400,000, until today, that we have now been awarded over $8 million in grant funding through competitive grants from the VDOE for 21st Century. And that money goes directly to student programs and abilities to allow them to get outside of their traditional school day and to take field trips. So, it helps to support holistic programs in 21st Century. So, we wanted to highlight that expansion as well. At this time, I'll let Ms. Brown Davis talk about 21st Century programs and other programs that are going on or that happened last year.
Good evening, my name is Latasha Brown Davis. I am the Assistant District Coordinator for 21st Century Programs. And we're going to talk about our family engagement programs now. The family engagement element within our 21st Century programs helps families meet academic and social goals tailored to each family's needs. By understanding our family's needs, we assist them by facilitating opportunities to support family connectedness to learning. Last year, each school hosted four family events during the academic school year and two events during the summer. Working in conjunction with healthy families, our families were actively engaged in classes that encouraged them to do something, activities, in order to learn specific subject matters. Parents provided positive feedbacks with their activities. Dinner is also served as well. Our enrichment programs supplement education by offering activities that are interesting to our students. The enrichment classes provide children with multiple opportunities to be engaged in after-school programs that are recreational as well as educational. Students retained a great deal of factual information from our off-site field trips as well. Prior to the field trips, students are given an introductory activity or a lesson hook. Our lesson hooks are an opportunity to inject energy into our new learning journey and to create an eagerness to find out more about a topic. In our introductory lessons, students are taught to think for themselves and make connections between existing knowledge and future learning. Following each field trip, students are taught to frame thinking, focusing on concepts at hand, and give learning objectives context. Students are taught, think for themselves, and make connections between existing knowledge and future learning. Now, in the left-hand corner up top, that's a field trip to the Luray Caverns. Prior to that field trip, students learned about stalactites and stalagmites. They also learned about westward expansion in the wagon trains of the frontier. After the trip, students journaled about whether or not they think they could make it on a trip out west through an area like the Luray Caverns. If you see far left, that is a field trip to the American Theater, located in the Phoebus area of Hampton, our hometown. Prior to the trip, teachers incorporated read alouds of different versions of The Lion King to compare and contrast stories. After the field trip, students performed their own theater play. And over here to the right, you'll see a field trip to the aquarium. The pre-activity is where children read books on fish adaptations and drew and explained their favorite adaptation. The post-activity was a suitcase science activity. Students examined squid beaks to learn how animals have adapted to their environment using the animal adaptation suitcase. School Age Program. We work collaboratively with the City of Hampton's School Age Program and provide curriculum alignment training for School Age Program staff. We provided data to assist over 1,500 School Age Program students. Our tightly knit bond has allowed for clarity of purpose and expectations within both of our programs, and it boasts a seamless working relationship that is enjoyed by all. Other out-of-school time programs. Stream, which is located at Booker and Barron, we have our ambassadors for youth SOL prep program. We also had two symposiums last year. The first one, Keys to Successful Out-of-School Time Programming, occurred where participants can boost academic performance, reduce risky behaviors, promote physical health, and provide a safe, structured environment for the children of working parents. Attending after-school programs improves student academic performance. In the Making of Make Reading a Summer Adventure Symposium, located, that was held in June of last year, Children Who Don't Read Over the Summer, I'm sorry, it boasts academic performance as well. The Summer Reading, Making, Make Reading a Summer Adventure. There were over 180 participants, and there was positive feedback from there as well.
So, our students had a very unique opportunity on June 10th. Actually, it took 70 selected students from SIMS to go to the NASA Langley International Space Station Downlink Program that was held at the Virginia Air and Space Center. And in that, the students were allowed to work with NASA employees doing hands-on STEM lessons. But not just that, they also were able to interact with astronauts in the International Space Station that were actually there. And you can see in the picture, they were actually talking to some of the astronauts, and they were able to form questions prior to the event to form in dialogue with them. So, it was a really great opportunity for some of our students. And here's some additional pictures from that event as well. Now, we hear from Ms. Jeanette McKenney about our summer program.
Good evening, my name is Jeanette McKenney. I'm the Shark Tank Curriculum Coordinator. So, last year, we had a phenomenal program. And as you'll see, Stream was held at 10 schools within our district, seven elementary and four middle schools. And not only did we have Stream, but we also had Andrews Gator Presidential Scholars participating. The program operated from June 25th to July 26th, and it enrolled over 1,100 students in grades 2 through 8. We achieved exceptional daily attendance, and we witnessed children increasing their language art skills and math skills. And of everyone surveyed, we had positive feedback, and we increased in awareness of STEM concepts and careers. So, about summer Stream. Through the Stream process, we're engaging students in various learning experiences that promote higher-level thinking skills through the use of holistic problem-solving, problem-based learning, and healthy living experiences. They create hands-on learning through Shark Tank, which is dear to my heart. And they also provided lunch and snack daily through a partnership with USDA. There's also enrichment activities, which you can see listed, 4-H Alternatives, Virginia Air and Space Center. At each site, there's one building coordinator, eight highly qualified teachers, two coordinators, one family connectedness teacher, and one nurse. These are the components of Stream. Stream is made up of this conglomerate of science, technology, recreation, redirection, engineering, engaging academics, art, and mathematics. Last year, we participated in an engaging professional development where we had over 133 staff members on the Spirit of Norfolk. We had an engaging discussion with Dr. Gail Gorky, and she motivated and presented, and just, it was an empowering moment of you reflecting on where we came from and where we're headed as we're reaching the population within Hampton City Schools. So, we left there just charging into Stream. Our curriculum last year consisted of MindWorks, which used a tinker shop in Grossology. We also did project learning, project learning in the following subject areas, math, language arts, science, history, sports, science, and Shark Tank. Last year's Shark Tank Challenge was life hacks, and students applied the technology design loop to create and design life hacks. And that, they were, they were, it was really interesting to see them taking materials. Basically, what happens in this process is, we're taking materials and creating their own work. We have selected highly qualified creatives throughout the district, and they come alongside the children and take them through the engineering design loop. And at the end, we have a fantastic presentation, which, thank you Chairman Cherry. And at the end, we have a fantastic presentation, which, thank you Chairman, Cherry has been there as well as Board Member Samuel. Here are some pictures from summer Stream photos, and we see children designing bridges. They are creating everything. We order the materials, bring them onsite, and literally the sky's the limit. Not only are students engaged, but are, we encourage the staff members to participate as well. And what's unique about this is that students are not just creating to leave at school, they're actually creating to take home. So once they're done with their design, you'll see them taking them on the school bus or sharing. And it gets really competitive with all the different sites at the different locations. So this is the current twenty eighteen nineteen continuation and what's new.
Ms. Brown Davis? So with our program continuation, we have the sixth annual symposium that's coming up, Preventing the Summer Slide Through Innovative Programming. Keeping youth fully engaged through June and July can prevent what educators refer to as summer slide. This common phenomenon refers to the loss of math and literacy skills when young minds are not engaged outside of school. In fact, youth can lose up to three months of these skills during the summer, which means their back-to-school performance is behind where they ended in the spring. Be sure to check out our website to sign up for this upcoming symposium on April the twelfth, two thousand nineteen, to hear our innovative ways of preventing the summer slide. We also have our Math Blitz Program located at Asbury Craft, Cooper and Burbank. Eleven Twenty First Century Grant Awarded Programs, which includes two hundred-plus staff, fifteen hundred-plus students during the school year, and a hundred and twenty-five plus staff, one thousand one hundred plus students during the summer. Hampton City Schools and School Age Programs Twenty First Century Collaboration Program also is in continuation throughout the school year.
So what's new this year? So last year, we started a pilot program to write curriculum and hire curriculum writers within Twenty First Century Program. This year, we went full-scale with it, and we had Sherri Drake, who wrote the Twenty First Century Curriculum for Elementary. Cindy Baird wrote the curriculum for Elementary Math. Shunita Walker did the Middle School Language Arts Curriculum, and Carly Ringer did the Middle School Math Curriculum. And the reason we did that is we really wanted to make sure that Twenty First Century aligned with the school day learning and pacing guides. So we did it in a manner that they would, the school, after school, they would have a different way of learning, but still enforcing the same things that were going on during the school day. So it's been very helpful and very successful with our, with our students. So what else is new? So Barrington Irvin, for those who don't know who Captain Barrington Irvin is, he was the, at the time, the youngest person to fly solo around the world, and at the time, the only African-American also to fly solo around the world. And so what he does is he goes on expeditions with National Geographic to do STEM-based opportunities. And so he created this flying classroom curriculum that we're actually piloting here at Bryan and Sims this year, where the students can go in and virtually watch him do these expeditions. And at the end of the expedition, they have formats where they do language arts and math included in it, as well as then they have to solve real-world problems based on where he went with his expeditions. So it's a really unique, hands-on opportunity for our students, and he's actually come out here and spoke to several of our students. And we are currently the only school district in Virginia with this program. Craft Elementary had the Math Blitz Program last year, but they wanted to expand, so we expanded to the Cubs Learning Club this year, which then included language arts and math curriculum. We have over sixty-five students participating in this program this year. We have four teachers. Snacks and transportation are provided by Hampton City Schools, and we would love for the opportunity, if you would like to see that, the program, it's held on Wednesdays every week. Another new program we had this year is at Phillips, and we had the Falcons Fifth Grade Band. And working in collaboration with Fine Arts Department, they were able, we were able to start a fifth grade band where we have over twenty-five students participating. And they focus on these following skills here, reading of language of music, listening skills, developing responsibility and awareness, teamwork skills, self-discipline skills, and also building confidence so that holistic approach to learning. Working with Dr. Woods and Veronica Heard and a number of staff, we created a team in which the academy, some of the academy teachers and the guidance counselors worked on developing a curriculum that would help other out-of-school entities be able to dive into the academies. So we are creating a template or a guide that focuses on two areas, elementary awareness of academies and middle school exploration of academies, that we will be able to hand out to other providers that will have hands-on project-based learning activities, research and self-exploration activities, and take-home activities that help to foster their learning in the academies at a younger age. So that is something that we are hoping to roll out with at our out-of-school time symposium for those who attend. And speaking of our out-of-school time symposium, again, as Ms. Brown Davis says, it is April twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and just want to highlight really quickly that Captain Barrington Irvin will be our keynote speaker, and slots are filling up fast, so it is free. So if anybody would love to attend, we would welcome anybody in the community to do so. And last but not least, we'll have this coming up summer programs and what they're about.
We are so looking forward to this summer as our theme is exploring Africa. We, and when planning, we recognized that it was the fourth, four-hundredth anniversary of the first African-American arriving in the area, and we thought, what a neat way to celebrate this, by incorporating this theme throughout Stream. The dates of our program will be June twenty-fourth through July twenty-fifth, and our program will run from twelve PM to five thirty PM. The locations are still to be determined. We have an anticipated number of eleven hundred students, an anticipated staff of a hundred and twenty-five. Our curriculum again is exploring Africa, and we will explore Africa through Shark Tank, mathematics, language arts reading, science, history, sports science, arts, community service, as well as our two newest additions to our subject areas, which are photography and cooking. And this year, for our Shark Tank Engineering Design Challenge, we're going to look at innovative designs for Africa, where students will be applying the technology design loop to design creative and innovative designs for Africa. Partnership and collaboration.
And as we know, we couldn't do these programs by ourselves, so it takes many partners and community, community partners to make this work for our students. And in-kind donations, they approximately gave us about two hundred and seventy-five thousand last year to help to student programming, and we couldn't do it without them, and we couldn't do it with the support of all those in Hampton City Schools and all the support staff that we have for them as well. So I just wanted to highlight and say thank you to all those that have helped make our program successful. Also, I wanted to highlight Alternatives, who facilitates the GPS program at Andrews, and they are a very strong partner of ours as well. And that concludes the presentation for the out-of-school time program. So at this time, if you have any questions, we would love to be able to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. That was a very, very informative report. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Yes, Mr. Samuel.
Mr. Rogers, you knew you, you wouldn't go anywhere without me asking your question, because I believe the Twenty First Century is such a fantastic program, and it offers our children and exposes our students and children to resources and things that they wouldn't normally be able to receive. So thank you so much for what you do. In regards to the summer enrichments, the Stream Program, what are the requirements for students to participate in that program?
So with the Stream Program, the, the students, the students that are at the schools that have Twenty First Century programs get an invitation to come, and then it's based on first surf ability, the, whatever's available at the time. There is a cap during the summer because of the field trip locations and the number of buses and things that may come into play. So there is a cap. We take about seventy-five at each, at each school site, and then from there, we start a waiting list. But the schools are tar, the students are targeted at their individual schools per VDOE funding for Twenty First Century.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members or comments? Ms. Mugler.
Couple of questions. One, I'll start with a comment, actually, and that was with respect to the moving forward piece where you are working on the connection of academy awareness and exploration. Really happy to see that that's going to be part of, of your offering, and I think that will certainly serve some of the goals that the board has for this school division in terms of making sure that we're pressing out that academy information to both middle and elementary school age children. So that's, I'm really glad to hear about that. Can you tell me a little bit more about Earlene's Music and Arts? I know that was one of the partners listed, and I'm not familiar with them.
Yeah, they're more known as EMA. The person that actually is the operator-owner is a former music teacher for Hampton City Schools. He was a high school teacher. And so they come out and they teach students how to read music, to learn, to play music. And so it's an enrichment class that, that many of our students get a chance to participate in.
Is that just part of the summer offering?
No, they also do it as well during the school, during the school year as well.
And how many children are exposed to that?
Anyone that's in the Twenty First Century Program, on enrichment days, they are exposed to that.
Okay. Okay. And then the other question I had was with regard to the alternatives and GPS program offering that they do, and I know AmeriCorps is connected with them and in their work with you all. Is AmeriCorps doing that GPS course? Is it only AmeriCorps, or is it?
So the GPS is a combination. They have had AmeriCorps members, and then they hire teachers, our Hampton City School teachers, to do the tutoring portions of their program. And then they also hire other students or college students to come out and do the enrichment pieces, the social-emotional learning pieces of the program.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much for the presentation and update.
Are there any more questions or comments? Well, thank you again. I have one quick question. Your list of community sponsors was very impressive. How do you go about getting your partners?
Really fostering relationships and seeing how they would be able to help our students to, whether it's helping with tutoring, or whether it's helping with free field trips, or whatever it may be, we go to them and seek their assistance. And a lot of times, they're so willing, especially the partners here in Hampton, are so willing to, to pitch in to help make sure that they're meeting the needs of our students.
Well, you're doing a good job of it. And I'm also excited to see that you'll be exploring Africa at this time with the four-hundredth anniversary of the slaves actually arriving in Hampton at Point Comfort. As Mr. Calvin Pearson, who has had grassroots efforts for years to make sure that history was corrected, said, they, I don't think, even went to Jamestown just ten days later. So that's, that's us. So I think it ties in really well with what we have planned for the four-hundredth for the year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, and certainly members of your team. Thank you so very much. I'd ask at this particular time, I think Ms. Brittany Dorch will provide information to the board relative to the monthly financial report at this time. Ms. Dorch.
Good evening, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, School Board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. It's my pleasure to present the December twenty eighteen operating report. Our revenues totaled around eighty-five million dollars, and this is relatively consistent with December of twenty seventeen. Included in your report, you'll note that within our revenues, we are accounting for the fiscal year eighteen carryforward funds that were approved by our local governing body around December twelfth. Then for our expenditures and encumbrances, they totaled around a one hundred million dollars, and this is slightly up by one percent when you compare it to December twenty seventeen of the previous fiscal year. And then, as always, including the report, you have a list of our transfers to and from the Technology Classification or Category Nine. That concludes my report for December twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Any questions for Ms. Dorch?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes the superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Moving on with the night, next item for business is number five, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. I have received one. Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you. Our speaker is Brenda Marks.
My name is Brenda Marks. I live at fifty-four Marina Road, and I have a nine-year-old daughter that attends Hunterby Andrews School. Unfortunately, I hate to say I'm back. I live for the day when I can stand here and say my daughter's at Hunterby Andrews and all things are well. I have spent since January twenty-ninth of this year until three o'clock this afternoon trying to deal with issues that have occurred at the school regarding the school's inability to adhere to her IEP.
Ms. Marks, I hate to interrupt you, please pardon my interruption, but this board welcomes public comment, but there are some things that are not appropriate for this public forum. Let me just read, Ms. Bowers.
I heard it. I'm generalizing so that I can get to the problem. It's communication.
Yes, ma'am, but let me, if I could just finish. Ms. Bowers has read the protocol for speakers to address the board in terms of public comment. And here's the thing I want to highlight, is that speakers shall not address matters involving individual students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. I'm not sure if that's where you're going. It appears that you are, but I wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
No, that is why you have a letter. What I was simply doing to, to let you know the severity of the issue, the problem with the school has become communication. And the communication I am being advised by the school was due to, the communication and availability of the administrative staff of the school has, I've been informed, is a direct result of a directive from the school administration, in that there is a requirement that additional evaluation of teaching staff has been mandated from, quote, downtown. And that has presented a position that the administration is no longer available.
Okay, well, Ms. Marks, if, if the issue is communication, I would just ask, so that we can all be clear, if you would just speak briefly with Dr. Caggianno, do you mind speaking to Ms. Marks, so that we can move forward on this?
We have, as I said, at three o'clock this afternoon, after I sent the email that I was going to be here tonight. be here tonight, I finally got back-to-back phone calls. But the problem is, the communication involves matters that I won't go into here, that are in here, that put this board at a very precarious liability point, because when safety plans and such are not being followed, if a child, any child, is injured or suffers injury due to the fact that those protocols are not being followed, that falls on y'all. And I can assure you that I don't know how many of this board member were here five years ago. This board has been served with a certified letter stating my position if my child is the one that gets injured. I have not rescinded that letter. So I take what has happened over the last several days, a week, very seriously, that I feel my child was at risk, and because an administration thought that it was more important for principals and assistant principals to spend their time in classrooms, I could not reach out to my administrative staff.
Thank you.
So that is, if you, if y'all will kindly read the letter, I think you will see why I take this so seriously.
Yes, ma'am, we've received it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item for business will be Item Six, Deliberation, and they consist of, the first two, I believe are owned by Ms. Dorch, which are 6.01, Review of School Board Policy, DIA Reporting Per-Pupil Cost; 6.02, Revision of School Board Policy, JHCH, Unpaid Meal Charges; the next five are owned by either Ms. Hatch or Ms. McKeithen, which are 6.03, Review of School Board Policy, JHFD, Student Abuse Use, Skateboard Use and Bike Helmet Safety; 6.05, Review of School Board Policy, JEH, Learn Fair Agreement; 6.05, Review of School Board Policy, JFF, Marriage Students; 6.06, Review of School Board Policy, JGA, Corporal Punishment; and 6.07, Revision of School Board Policy, JEF, Release Time for Students. And the final one for deliberation is 6.08, which is owned by Ms. Ruth, Revision of School Board Policy, GCG, Certificated Employees, Probation and Contractual Status. Are there any questions by any board members regarding any of these policies for deliberation? Okay, everybody's ready to respond? Okay, thank you. These will be moved to action for our next meeting. Moving on to Item Seven, Items for Action. These all belong to Ms. Ruth, but these were deliberated at our last meeting, and they consist of 7.01, Revision of School Board Policies, GBK, JFCG, and KO Tobacco-Free School Division for Staff, Students, and Visitors; 7.02, Revision of School Board Policy, GCPB, Resignation of Staff Members; 7.03, Revision of School Board Policy, GDH, Support Personnel Grievances; 7.04, Review of School Board Policy, GBACC, Maintaining Professional Staff/Student Boundaries; 7.05, Revision of School Board Policy, GBEH, and JHCL, Lactation Support; 7.06, Review of School Board Policy, GCI, Staff Assignments and Transfers; 7.05, Revision of School Board Policy, GCPC, Employment Retirement. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Action Items 7.01 through 7.07 as a block.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve Action Items 7.01 through 7.07 as a block. Is there any discussion by board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item for business is Deliberation First Read. I will ask the people who own these policies to please come forward. That looks like Dr. Bowlen and Ms. Hatch. 8.01, Revision of School Board Policy, EEAC, School Bus Maintenance and Safety; 8.02, Revision of School Board Policy, EEAD, Use of School Buses; 8.03, Revision of School Board Policy, KN, Sex Offender Registry Notification; 8.04, Revision of School Board Policy, KNA, Violent Sex Offenders on School Property; 8.05, Review of School Board Policy, JEDB, Student Dismissal Precautions. I'll stop there, Dr. Bowlen, because these are all yours. Would you like to explain?
Yes, I will. Policy EEAC, School Bus Maintenance and Safety. This policy was revised to reflect current VSBA policy, and the revision centered around mandatory reporting of bus crashes. Policy EEAD, Use of School Buses. This policy was revised to reflect current VSBA policy, and again, the revision centered around reimbursements for the use of school buses. Policy KN, Sex Offender Registry Notification. Again, this policy was revised to reflect current VSBA policy, and more precisely defines where such individuals are allowed on school grounds. Policy KNA, Violent Sex Offenders on School Property. This policy was revised to reflect current VSBA policy with a clarification to the scope of school property. Last but not least, JEDB, Student Dismissal Precautions. This is just a simple five-year review, and there are no recommended changes at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any clarifying questions regarding these policies? The next two are owned by Ms. Hatch. 8.06, Review of School Board Policy, JI, Student Scholarships; and 8.07, Review of School Board Policy, JIA, Student Recognitions.
Yes, good evening. Both of these are five-year reviews with no recommended changes at this time.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to Item Number Nine, Information. 9.01, The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will be held on Wednesday, February 20th, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. at the Rupert Sargent Building located at 1 Franklin Street. Is there any information the superintendent would like to bring before the board or the public, Dr. Smith?
Madam Chair, other than to acknowledge, I think as Mrs. Goral has already, and others with our young people, to really acknowledge your hard work as a board, and to say on behalf of the staff, how much we appreciate the leadership that the board, that you provide in support of the teaching and learning, and certainly the mission of Hampton City Schools. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Any other information for board members? Yes, Dr. Mason?
Yes. Just would like to send a big shout-out to the folks over at Machen Elementary School. I did have an opportunity to visit with them this week and received a wonderful Machen sweater representing our mighty Machen Mustangs. And then also, at our last meeting, I did announce that Xavier Williams did receive the Harry F. Byrd Leadership Award for the 3rd Congressional District, which carries a $15,000 scholarship award with it. He will be in Richmond on February the 13th to receive that award. So I don't think we announced the last part as far as he will receive the award on the 13th, so I wanted to make sure everyone knew that as well, because we are very proud of Xavier.
We are very, very proud of him. Any other comments from board members or questions?
I have a few words. This month, we celebrate school boards across the Commonwealth whose members work to ensure that our students are getting the best quality education possible. And now I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank all of you for not only giving me the great honor and privilege of sitting in this seat, but also for ensuring that Hampton City Schools achieve success for every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very nice and well-appreciated, I'm sure, by all board members. Any other business to come before the board? I would like to announce that the board will be reconvening into closed session, but with this being no more business to come before the board, we stand adjourned.